Uh, what's the call orders, uh, city vendor commission meeting, June twenty seventh, twenty twenty four. Jim, if you allow everybody in, anybody in the Zoom? Okay, thank you. Uh, okay, today is our commission meeting, uh, for those of you on Zoom. Um, we work workshop agenda. And, uh, starting with the flag sleeve. Lisa roll call, please.
Commissioner Langraft?
Here.
Commissioner Mento?
Here.
Mayor Kribel?
Here. Lisa, would you read the open public meetings announcement?
Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided. The agenda has been posted in City Hall and on the city's website.
Uh, would you also read, read the, uh, live streaming notice?
The city eventer offers live streaming and the option of public comment via remote access. Public who participates remotely will be muted during the commission meeting except the public comment portions of the meeting. Any person attempting to disrupt the meeting may be denied access at the discretion of the city. In the event where remote access is unavailable due to technology malfunction or any other reason beyond the city's control, the city will not pause or stop the live meeting. City commission meetings are held in person and the public is welcome to attend. The best way to ensure that an individual's ability to publicly comment is to attend in person so that the comments may be made in the event of a technology malfunction. The city reserves the right to discontinue offering public comment via remote access at the discretion for any future meetings.
Thank you, Lisa. So just to reiterate, this is our workshop meeting. We go through our workshop agenda first, which is basically the same as our regular meeting. And then, uh, that allows us as a commission to discuss, um, some of these items in an open forum. And then at the end, there's time for, uh, public or public comment on Zoom or in person on those particular items. Any items at the end of the, at the end of the meeting. All right. So, uh, starting with this agenda, um, there are no presentations. There are no department head reports. There is no capital discussion today. Following items are scheduled for action during a regular portion of the meeting, um, following this workshop meeting. Uh, there are no minutes to adopt. And there are no ordinance and duck introductions today. There is also, there are also no ordinance, public hearings for adoption. Um, but there are a number of resolutions, uh, to approve by consent. Um, so throughout this, if, uh, either of you have, uh, commissioners have any questions or comments on them, I'll go through them and just please interrupt me, uh, for any comments. So first is a resolution twenty twenty four dash one ninety seven. This has to do with parking regulations for the summer season, July first through September thirtieth. This is a yearly, uh, resolution that we do for all of our events. It just allows the police department to, uh, to restrict parking for certain streets when there are events. Any questions on that?
Nope.
Um, item one ninety eight is refund of, um, volleyball league overpayments. Uh, any, uh, item one ninety nine is a refund of pickleball membership fee. Um, item one, only item two hundred rejects bid received for the construction and ban shell and authorizes rebid. So we had a meeting with the architect, um, his administrator, uh, uh, we discussed, uh, redesigning the the, the foundation, removing some of the structural concrete and adding some other details that would be cost savings measures to bring it more into a realistic number than the bids that we received for the band.
We hope.
We hope. So, uh, yeah, things are, things are expensive all over. Um, so that will be going out to rebid. We're waiting on the redesign for that. Um, items want two oh one through two oh.
One thing that we did not anticipate of that delaying the construction. We were anticipating construction starting in September. We still anticipate that. So winter time it'll be constructed.
Yeah. So as, as planned, the temporary stage will work, work through the summer season. And this, um, new redesign with some tweaks. Um, uh, we did some brainstorming on those. Uh, but as you say, we're, we're keeping the, we're keeping the track of, uh, timeline. All right. Any other questions? Um, resolutions two oh one through two oh four are the remainder of our liquor license renewals throughout the city. These are existing liquor licenses, um, that are just up for renewal, so they pay a fee. And we memorialize their renewal. Uh, two oh five authorizes seasonal and part-time employment. This is mostly, um, the rec department. So these are counselors. Um, we have a huge lineup of, uh, of, uh, camps. Um, and I want to thank, um, the rec department for working so hard to get the surf camp, which is totally sold out, getting that re, um, uh, re- reman. But there's a, there's a huge amount of camps from CSI to the volleyball this summer. So we need, and the sports camp, which is always packed.
So we were able to get instructed.
Instructors for and, uh, counselors and assistant counselors.
Surf camp.
Yes.
That was an issue, wasn't it?
Yeah. Yep. So the surf camp is up and running and could be, uh, it was all sold out already. So.
Have instructors, anybody returning?
Um, we're running it through, uh, one of the, um, one of the Sean McGill from the fire.
Okay, that's why I was wondering. I want to ask that.
And I believe there are some.
Yeah, okay, good.
Returning. So, um, item two oh six authorizes interim fire official while, uh, Joseph, Joseph Aina Zelli. Um, while Tom is away. Uh, item two oh seven authorizes a, uh, authorized refund of tax overpayment. And there will be two resolutions that are added. Two oh eight approves, uh, settlement litigation of, uh, with Camden County. Nicole, do you want to mention anything on that?
Sure. That's a, an improvement, approving a settlement agreement, um, with Camden County for a matter in which the city has hired a police officer that was trained through the Camden County um, program. Um, the officer is, is still working with us and working out well. Um, under the statute, if we have that officer come to our uh, city within a certain amount of time after they were trained by another entity, we would compensate them for the training costs for that officer. So it's pretty routine. It's required by the statute and that's what that's approving.
Right.
So once this is approved, the, um, county will withdraw the litigation.
Yeah. And the officer's working out well. He's been, um,
Yes.
They, they are, she's just very happy and proud to have him. But that's a, that's a monetary return, return to the city of Camden County. Two oh nine approves this hiring of seasonal lifeguards. Um, there's any, uh, questions on that? Or any of the others that we've mentioned so far?
Nope.
Else? All right. Um, so, uh, we'll have approval of bills and payroll. Uh, if there are any discussion items, I have none. And then we will, um, we can open to public comment for items that we have discussed so far. That is there any, is there, can I have a motion to open for public comments on any items that we've discussed so far in the workshop?
So moved.
Lisa roll call, please.
Commissioner Langraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes. Comments on items we talked about so far? Uh, any comments from items we talked about so far on Zoom? Jim?
Anybody in Zoom who wishes to comment on any of the items that have been uh, spoken about or will be voted on, please make yourself known within Zoom by raising your hand within the chat feature and you will be recognized.
Being none, have a motion to close public comment. Make the motion.
Second.
A roll call, Lisa?
Commissioner Langraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
And I'd like to call, yes. I'd like to call to order a regular portion of the meeting. Uh, we have no, uh, as I said before, we have, uh, no approval of minutes, no ordinances, introductions. Uh, we have, uh, no public hearings. Uh, there are, uh, public hearings that are pushed to June eleventh, uh, because the press failed to publish them. Uh, ordinances, if anyone's interested, are twenty twenty four, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen.
Mayor, just to be clear, it's July eleventh.
July eleventh. I'm sorry, I said June. Thank you. Uh, so, uh, there are no ordinance adoptions. And I have a motion to adopt by consent resolutions twenty twenty four, one ninety seven to twenty twenty four, two oh seven, including the
Two oh nine.
Two oh nine.
Just, um, heads up, Lynette Galloway just texted, she can't get into the meeting.
Oh, Jim, could you, uh, check and see if Nanette is in the waiting room?
She's, she's not in the waiting room. She's in the meeting. Her name is on, on there.
All right. Motion to adopt by.
And Mayor, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I want to.
Yeah.
Just be clear, it's resolutions twenty twenty four, one eighty seven through two oh nine.
Through two.
Added two.
Yeah, right. So motion to adopt resolutions twenty twenty seven, one, twenty twenty four dash one ninety seven through twenty twenty four dash two oh nine. I'll make the motion to adopt those resolutions by consent. Can I have a second?
Second.
Lisa, may I have a roll call?
Commissioner Langraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes. Okay. Is, uh,
Do you have the?
I do.
Not here, Lisa, do you have, uh, can you read into the record, uh, bills and payroll?
Of course. So the bills for this meeting are one million, nine hundred forty-eight thousand, five dollars and ninety-six cents. Payroll for this meeting is June ninth, twenty twenty four through June twenty second, twenty twenty four, six hundred and ninety-one thousand, seven hundred and five dollars and eighty-nine cents.
And motion to approve bills and payroll, please. I'll make a motion to approve the bills and payroll as noted. May I have a second?
I second, and I am recusing myself also from twenty four dash zero one, four one one. Payment to ACU A for water testing.
Okay, as noted. Lisa, may I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Langraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes, with recusal.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes. We have no announcements or safety report today. Uh, Commissioner comments? Do we have any comments, Commissioner Mento?
Yeah, I'll have a. Yes, um, we're pretty much in the departments of finance and tax. It's business as usual. Those offices just pump out the work morning to night. Um, there's not, nothing new that really happens in there other than, you know, the business of the city. Um, however, we did have a bond sale last week. And, um, we had, uh, interest from seven banks for the seven bid, two on notes and two on the bonds. So we had a bond sale for notes and on bonds. Um, the pricing, as indicated by our FA, was very good and competitive and, uh, aggressive. And, um, I think, uh, Tom, you have some specific numbers maybe you want to go over in front of me?
I know, um, the, the bonds were, uh, well, they were covered with all that. With an interest rate of three point two six. Uh, the ordinance says that that, uh, bonds efforts were ordinance twenty twenty dash zero two four, which were general improvements for four and a half million. Twenty twenty one dash zero zero six, which was water and sewer improvements. That was three million, five hundred and twenty-five thousand. And ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero two. Uh, also water and sewer improvements going in four hundred and seventy-five thousand. Or a total of nine million and a half million. Uh, that was the bond sale. And there was also bond anticipation note sale, which are mature. Uh, TV, uh, securities were two bidders. Up and winning is the winning bid at three point seven, three, seven, eight, eight, three. And we carry out that many decimal points because TV security, you'll see, was at three point seven four five nine zero five. So very close. Uh, it was thirteen million, four hundred thousand in general improvements. For, or sewer improvements for a total of sixteen million, four hundred thousand. Again, those are bond anticipation notes that mature on here. We'll be back next year, rolling that over and probably, uh, going to private financing of the bond sale and some of it. Um, that's, that's the results of the sales. Now, that follows the rating that we got and we spoke about at the last meeting from Standard and Poor's where our bond rating is double A and it's where the standard of highest rating.
Yeah, we have an excellent rating.
Yes. And it stems from, you know, good management.
Mostly good management.
From, from.
Starting back in two thousand and sixteen, right? You guys came into office, yep.
I mean, the, the, uh, the Commissioner Langraft's departments take, uh, the, the end, end up taking the majority of those money. His projects and public works are the ones that have.
Most costly.
The most costly. But every department benefits from the ability to to borrow money at a favorable rate, which is, this is a very favorable rate if you look at the market case today. And these, 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 they, these go for capital improvements for new ambulances, new, uh, uh, you know, the police department has various improvements that they have to make to their physical plant. There, there's a, there's a wide variety of, of places where this money, um, gets used and it gets used, um, carefully.
Including in the ground, right Lance? Things you don't see, but.
We buried a lot of that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Pipes, pipes and more plates.
Yeah, keep the city running. It's important.
Yeah, bunch of it's going to go to recreation. We, Ed Stinson and I met today at the basketball court, talk about how we're going to redo that. Um, it's in need of some work. He's got some ideas that maybe save us some money. When, you know, I met after we left Utah, um, might just need to resurface it. Depending when we do some core samples, see what's underneath, build the top and see what we got. So.
Yeah. And one of the things I think the rating, um, the FAs did for us is they sent us a list of all those sales in the area. And, um, we did well. You know, it, it's sort of, uh, a way to compare yourself, you know, to others and, and see that we got a fair.
Right.
Um,
That actually came through Alexis Batten, our bond counsel from Martron Greier. And I think she got that information from Phoenix Advisors.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Commissioner Langraft, do you have any?
I have a couple of things, um. Beach replenishment project, we had a call today with the Army Corps and DEP. Uh, it's moving forward. They're getting ready to put the project out to bid. The one hiccup is that they want to replace the crossover at New Haven Avenue with a wooden ramp. It's wooden now, but it's failing. We've, we've actually just spent about twenty thousand dollars. Um, that's a main access point for us as well as the Army Corps when they come into town to do the replenishment. We've asked them to replace that like they did at Suffolk with a concrete ramp. There's some pushback there. They are going to change their bid to put in a concrete ramp. It may be an add alternate because of the cost. Um, we're going to see that. Our structural engineer, um, which is our, is preparing the specs for that to try and save time. We're trying to get it on, on their schedule. Um, I did get a letter of support requesting that from Congressman Van Drew. So we sent that out to the Army Corps and they're in receipt of that. If the money's not there, they're not going to be able to do it, but at least they're trying. Um, it would be very helpful to us and them if they were able to put a concrete ramp in it, right? It's just dollars.
Well, looking forward to the, uh, the beach replenishment, that's an access point for heavy equipment, right?
Yes. Right now, they use Suffolk and if they can get it under the pier at low tide, it's fine. If not, they have to go to Margate and bring it all the way up.
Right.
So that's problematic.
In their interest as well.
It is. And the wooden ramp is just, it doesn't, it's less costly now. And Ed gave a perfect description. He used a kind of a bar graph to, to show us. You know, it's very cheap now to put it in, but maintenance of it after two or three years goes extremely high.
Right.
Um, concrete, it's high at the front. There is no maintenance. It's done. You clean it. Sweep it, power wash it, whatever. So, um, so that's on the beach replenishment, still on schedule for the fall, very much depending on federal funding. Um, the numbers that they've got so far for other replenishment projects have been extremely high, exceeding the amount of money that was allocated for that replenishment. So hopefully those numbers come in a little bit more competitively. Um, a couple of things on offshore wind, we received notification from the FAA that they are conducting an astronomical study concerning the following. Um, paraphrase, wind turbines. Uh, they exceed by significant number of feet. The structure described above exceeds obstruction standards to be eligible for consideration. Comments must be received before July thirteenth. So they are looking at how high these structures are. You would have thought they would have done that already. Uh, we also got a letter from the mayor of Brigantine Vincera, thanking us as a governing body for supporting his effort and all of our efforts, um, in opposing offshore wind. Um, and trying to get, and the county is now backing this as well, backing our, uh,
Opposition.
Opposition to the offshore wind project. So, uh, and again, we say this every time, if we can find a better alternative energy source, we're there.
Right.
This just is way too subsidized, way too impactful to our communities, um, in a negative way, uh, and it's just, it's going to cost us more.
And not what was originally presented.
Not was originally presented. And, and honestly, the, the group of them, the several hundred that were going to be off our shore, has not been re-represented yet, but that lease is out there again.
Yeah.
The, the state has put it out there again to rebid it. So they will be nine miles off our beach if this goes through. So, that's, and it was, well, you have four of them, four or five over at ACU A. That's four or five.
Four, six, yeah.
That's not thousands. The, the plan is to put these things all the way down our coast.
And they're at a sewer plant.
Right, and they're at a sewer plant.
Yeah.
And, no.
And there's nothing really.
No.
Pretty around the sewer.
Um, so that's it on the wind, offshore wind. They did have a meeting yesterday talking about what's going through Atlantic City. I did not attend that. It's about the open space and the areas that they would be coming up in parks. They have to, like we do with our open space and, and, um, uh, green acres land. They have to purchase other land to do that because they're disturbing protected lands. So they're going to have, they're going to have a difficult time with that.
Diversion.
Diversion permit, right? Looking, looking for that word. Um, are you going to talk about the concerts?
Um, uh, go ahead.
No.
So that's you, Pirate Beach.
Yeah. So coming up, we have some concerts, um, this Saturday with Pirate Beach playing at six o'clock at Newport Avenue. Food trucks, entertainment, that whole night. Um, the movies, the movie at Jaws was shown, uh, last Monday. It was pretty cool.
Yeah.
I got to go out there for the beginning of it. Like, and I think I said in an email, we should have shown Twister.
Yeah.
Because the wind was blowing about thirty miles an hour out there. Um, good thing, no bugs, right? It was a good thing. Um, about two hundred people showed up. That's nice. A lot of kids, which I'm like, kids, this is a pretty scary movie. Well, I remember that when I was fourteen watching that thing, but, um, it was a lot of fun. And the next one is July twenty ninth. That'll be Elf.
I want to go.
It's a Christmas theme, Christmas in July kind of thing. And then there's one in August and it's, um, Manoa. I don't know that movie, so it's a kid's cartoon.
Yeah.
Movie, so. Um, and then July third, we have Independence Day celebration on July third, which is music. Ventor Mile, Fun Run and fireworks off the pier.
Right.
So.
So I have.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll just back, piggyback to say that the fourth, after that is the pier will be open for public view. So they'll be open up to the second gate, um, and allow people to watch the Margate fireworks from that location. It's always a good night. Um, and then, uh, and then of course tomorrow is the farmer's market and every Friday at eight thirty uh, uh, near Newport Avenue. Um, I did put out a kind of a PSA around biking and bike safety. Um, there's a, a bike, I just want to reiterate that bikes are permitted on the boardwalk during daylight hours. Uh, they're restricted on Saturday and Sunday between July fourth and Labor Day to six AM to twelve PM. I think, I think it, uh, our, our city is a biking community and we, we encourage alternate uses of transportation because, uh, um, parking is at a premium during the summer. But bikers, when you're on a, when you're on a bike, you are a vehicle. So you need to follow the rules of the roadway, which includes stopping at stop signs and red lights and going the right way down right, one-way road, streets, following the right side of the road, the roadway. And those provisions are there because bike, because, uh, vehicles are not expecting you to be on the left side. And, um, I've personally, uh, been in an accident where a vehicle, where a bike, um, was traveling on the left-hand side of the vehicle. Fortunately, no one was hurt, but, um, it happens every year. Last year, we had two pretty significant bike accidents where there were injuries and we hope to avoid any this summer. So please use the, uh, and always wear a helmet. Please use the, the, the bike ways safely and use our, our bike lanes safely. And then last, I have, um, uh, a local, uh, student who is attending the College of New Jersey. Maddie Sarno was awarded eighteen hundred dollars from the Atlantic City Education Foundation, a scholarship that, um, looks to help, um, high school seniors and, um, uh, that by, um, uh, providing, uh, promoting overall well-being of Atlantic City's children. So she's Atlantic City High School. Uh, recent graduate, uh, that program is run by a family friend of ours who has been a, uh, Anne Rosenberg has been a school board member for decades since nineteen eighty-seven. I think she's run this program. Very, um, very, very proud of her and the work she does for Atlantic City students. And in this case, one of our, uh, our local kids.
One more thing.
Yeah.
One more thing. I am going to say what you, you suggested, Tom. We had a, um, meeting with Judge Blee on our county or central municipal court, the county central municipal court. Um, went very well. Uh, we're working towards um, resolving some of the problems we've had over the last few years with the central municipal court. And just really for you and, and the public, but, um, they've seemed to have addressed a lot of our code issues with the code office. PD is still a work in progress. The chief was there and he was able to voice his concerns. And Judge Blee's staff wrote those down and they're going to try and work towards fixing that.
Right.
Um, we still have, and, and Blee was very honest with us. He said, look, your presentation on how, and this was Tom and the team that put it together along with Brigantine to, to merge with them was well done. And it, and it met all the parameters. We could, he will, if we really want to, he will approve that at some point down the road if we want to get out. Um, he did say it's going to cost you more than what the county's doing. Um, so we, we said we would give it a try and see if we can still finish these things.
Yeah, but.
You know, we're always looking to try and save money and, and it's a significant amount of money that we could save staying with municipal court as long as we can get. And it's not just our people. It's not just code. It's people that are being adjudicated. They're having trouble getting through to the county court.
Right.
They're having trouble getting online or going to the meetings and, or the, the hearings. So we want to make sure that our constituents and even visitors that have to deal with the court, sorry to say, you're dealing with them, but you have to. Um, that's what we're, we're trying to make better. And I think Judge, and I've been Judge Blee for a long time. He's very honest with us. He said, we have some things we can, we need to fix and we think we can. So it was a good meeting, hour and twenty minutes long. Um, so.
Good.
Yeah.
It sounds promising.
It did. It really did. As opposed to
I'm glad.
The last few meetings we had, there were, you're not going, you can't, you got to do all these things. We were able to do all those things.
Yeah.
So we had the option.
I know we were really upset when they wouldn't let us go to Brigantine, but I think this gives time to flush everything out.
It does.
Make sure that we're making the best decision.
So one of the biggest things that will help them as the, as the central municipal court is the fact that the state passed a law that will allow the state police matters.
Yeah.
That were coming out of a municipality who wasn't in the central court to go to the central, forcing it to go to the central court.
Right.
Saving money for those other towns that weren't paying into the central court. So when that comes out as of August first, we'll start to see.
So they won't be going to the.
Now, they'll go back to their home municipalities. So Hammond.
Yeah, that's.
Is a key. There's a lot of those because they have the expressway. Um, Galloway.
Buena was a big.
Buena was a big one.
Yeah.
Folsom was a big one because that's got, you know, the, they.
Well, you don't have to go right there.
Well, um, Buena doesn't have their own police park.
Right.
They use PD, they use state police.
How about BBT, them too? BBT and Buena? Yeah.
Buena's township is where we're really talking.
Yeah.
Sort of those, yeah. So that's what I have. Sorry. Thanks, Tom, for reminding me. That was.
Thanks for that. We, we're looking also at our ordinances and the way that the farm structure is set up. There, there's a lot of things that we have as, uh, court appearance mandatory that could be made to, uh, for people to be able to plead online and pay a fine without having to go to court.
Right.
That, that will likely improve the efficiency even more to reduce the caseload that the court has to deal with. Not to mention that it'll help with collections because frequently when people get summonses, they don't go to municipal. It's more and more difficult for the courts to issue, uh, failure to appear warrants and those sorts of things. So, uh, Mattel's going to be working on the ordinance that will be presented to you sometime in the future. We are to consider, uh, to make more things, make less. We're here to consider uh, to make more things, make less things court mandatory.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you're pulling as many levers as you can. And if you look at it from the, the, over time, we've taken. We've already, that, you know, the court, the, the county program was already a savings. And now that they can, and we, I think we gave them until December. To make the, to see where these state cases get adjudged, get, get dropped and some of the other efficiencies come into play. To see if it can be uh, even more efficient, but we, but you know, going. Or we've got options now that are more efficient and more cost-saving where, where, where.
And there's always going to be growing pains. If there aren't growing pains, then you're probably not doing something right, you know?
Yeah, uh, sounds like it was a very, it, it's like there's, there's some, some light at the end of the.
Yes, agreed, agreed.
All right, so that, that cover Commissioner comments?
I think so.
I think so. So I will uh, ask for a motion to open for public comment. Uh, this meeting would be uh, uh, so motion open for public comment?
So moved.
At the second? Second, roll call.
Commissioner Lee and Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kriebel.
Yeah, so at this point, we can open the floor to public comment for any matters of interest. Uh, we ask you to come up to the microphone, give your name and address for the record. And um, then we will, we'll, we, we have two here in the, uh, in the, in the chambers. We can start with you folks if you, if you'd like, and then we'll move to Zoom. So this could be about anything from the color of the flowers we planted, the microphone age, you have to give your name and address.
My name's Jessica Tolan. I live at one oh eight South Portland Avenue.
Okay.
And we had a question regarding the new lines that we drawn up for parking today. Um, for example, one of our neighbors, it goes past her driveway right onto her grass. Rather than going at the end of her driveway across. And we just wondered how you decided where the end line would be because it's actually, truly does affect her property.
Right. So this is a, we can, uh, our, our business administrator can speak to it as well. He did a, he did a survey with our police chief.
Mm-hmm.
And um, the, in general, the, the distance is seventy-five feet. It was previously a hundred. So we kind of coordinate, we, 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 we codified the um, all the street ends to be uh, to be equal. And in some cases, um, we adjusted, I think on Portland Avenue, there's a, a driveway that's new to a. Uh, uh, a print, a um, a Pittsburgh facing home, Princeton facing home. That um, we stopped it so it wouldn't interrupt the middle of that driveway. But seventy-five feet is the, sort of the, the citywide standard for an ordinance that has been on. For decades. Unfortunately, Portland and over the years, um, Portland wasn't included on that. But we had to include all the streets in the entire city uh, to have the same, am I, am I speaking basically correct?
Wasn't done today.
They're not, yeah, yeah. They're going to do them, they're going to do every street in this, every street end in the city of Ventnor is going to be codified the same way. I can give you a copy of the ordinance if you like. Um, but it's a process where the painters are doing it. And this has been something we've been working on. Unfortunately, it comes right on the heels of probably the worst parking day of the year. Uh, um, which is the Fourth of July weekend. But um, but it, but we can't look at it as a, uh, we kind of have to. We, we, we've been working on this process for a while. Um, and in, in some cases. Um, and it may seem as though you're losing some parking spaces, but those parking spaces were actually illegal. So the parking spaces that were on the opposite side of the street and the parking spaces that were on either side of the ramp. Were not necessarily legal. And there's three reasons why we did this. Um, one is obviously um, access for emergency. And um, so uh, emergency vehicles and, and private vehicles had, were unable to make. A turn. They would have to go into someone's driveway to make a three-point turn to get out. And that is really not conducive to emergency response. Um, so those, those are. Uh, the unobstructed access for fire trucks and ambulances. The other thing is public access. So the parking is not, is not allowed in that. Street end, but drop off for, for people to allow public access for public beaches uh, is allowed. So people will still be doing drop off and pickups in those, those ranges, but they're not allowed to park.
But now you have so many cars parking on the street, having people going down, turning around, you're creating a bottleneck.
Well, they were doing the same thing, but there were cars parked there. So now the, the space is wider, right?
It, it's open, but you're still going to have issues of people trying to get down and back up. Because now everyone who's on the street has to park in the, those spaces that are left. They're going to be blocking their driveways. There's not going to be a lot of openings. And it's going to make it much more difficult.
Hmm.
Especially for the residents who live there.
Right, so consistency is another thing. So every street end, including the high-rises and all, every street from Fredericksburg to Jackson. Has the same requirement that there would be emergency, you know, the city, cities, it's incumbent upon the city to make sure that there's. The, the street is, is, is open for, for safety access. That's really the primary thing. And, and it wasn't. And then the other, the other thing is uh, public access. So they can make those turns. And, and the street is um, and then consistency throughout the entire city. It's the same, it's the same condition. Portland happens to be one of the more narrow streets because our city is an old city. So it wasn't really designed for a lot of the SUVs and. And, and large vehicles that people have. So this is in some way going to relieve some of that strain, but.
But you still have the parking space that people have been using at the end of the street next to the pier.
They won't be able to do that anymore.
Is there going to be a sign that goes up?
Yes.
Department told me that without.
There's a sign and there'll also be, it says no parking with a big X. But uh, it, it, on the other side of the ramp.
Come down on the sidewalk at the end.
On the sidewalk.
One or two cars that go up there.
Yeah.
And because of their sign, parking enforcement says they won't take it because it's.
That's no longer true.
Yeah, there'll be a sign.
There's an ordinance that says you can't park there with a big X in that whole area. It says fire zone from the end of it all the way forward, or at least no parking all the way forward.
Yeah.
Street. I'm actually talking about.
No matter what. Yeah, you're not allowed to park on the sidewalk. It's a public right of way.
So we'll advise those, Commissioner Mayor Kriebel will advise those parking officers that no one can park on the sidewalk.
Yeah. And that, that's anywhere. If you have a driveway, if you find a driveway that's still being extended, it might be a driveway. And it blocked the side.
Right, yeah.
They did it all last summer and nothing was ever done.
Well, and, and, and that's, and that's part of the problem, right? Because it wasn't very well marked. And now part of our, part of our, because it wasn't, it wasn't just your street.
Look, I actually spoke to the parking authority, the person giving the tickets and everything. He couldn't do anything because there's no, no parking sign.
Right, and now there will be. And that's part of this is that it's going to be consistent throughout the city. There'll be signs that, that allow him to enforce that kind of a thing. And, and I'm not saying it's going to be the sidewalk, I understand. So there's going to be signs on either side of the ramp and the sidewalk that there's no parking.
I'm going to laugh after this other stuff, but I know that there's other people on that want to discuss the parking. So I want to keep on the same topic before moving on to a different topic.
Sure.
I'll, I'll give the online people a chance to.
Okay.
Engage in that.
Did you have something? You have to give your name and then for the record and your address.
Suggested.
I have to give your name and your address.
Esther Tong, one oh eight South Portland. She's my daughter.
Oh.
Um, some of the people suggested that the people who live on the street get a parking permit. Because now it's fewer parking spaces and some of.
You haven't been able to park there. People have just been doing it.
They're not there, but like one of the houses, she lost a parking space because of how the line is drawn.
Let's put a, yes.
And then one of the corner of the house with two garages that go into the street. So there's no parking there.
Right.
Uh, that, but you put that yellow angle there. So nobody could park there anymore.
What you're proposing is that we allow.
There's somebody saying that she lived in Atlantic City, they gave them uh, permits so that you can park. Because as you said, July fourth, God help us on the street. I don't know what's going to happen.
Yeah, but it, but, but in January fourth, there's not a problem. So there's. But yeah, I understand. So um, when we look at it, there's a parking permits only in one section of the city that is in Atlantic City. And then we're. Uh, and that was really regarding the, the, the Disney stop where there, there's usually more traffic around that area. That's the one area that, um, but they can be prob, uh, they can be problematic as well. I don't think that it makes sense to have at first. Blush to have parking permits on the beach block.
She just asked that I bring them up.
Yeah, thank you.
Doesn't stop anyone else?
So that's the other thing. So parking is not, a parking permit doesn't allow you, doesn't stop someone from parking in that spot.
I understand that, but if they.
And it, and it, and with it, you'd have to have restricted parking, like a two-hour parking zone.
You know, um. Streets in Philadelphia, if you don't have a park permit, you don't park on the street. You get ticketed, you get turbed.
Right.
If Margaret has that, you can't park on the street.
Margaret has the entire block. They don't allow parking on the beach block whatsoever.
But we would say if everyone lives on the street, you must have a permit to park on the very streets to stop. The, the onslaught.
Stop the public from getting access to the beach. That's why we don't do it. Yeah.
She said they're going down and dropping off and turning around. They're still not going to park there. They still have to park someplace else now.
Right.
They've taken out this spot.
We're not going to prohibit the public from parking on public streets.
So the, so the unintended consequence is that now the people that live a block off the beach are now going to be inundated with those folks that are not able to park on your street. So the, 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 none of these parking spots are any individual's property. They're the.
I understand.
City's problem. They're the, they're the city's right.
Parks there. I understand that, but it seems that the way the line was drawn, some people have lost access to even put their own car. If they had two cars in front of their house.
Well, that parking is a public speed. It's not their property. It's not their spot.
Okay.
It's a, it's not, as, as much as, and I get the same uh, comment from my wife when she, when she drives us home, someone's in my spot. It's not her, it's not her spot.
Gotcha.
So it's, it's maybe in front of their house, but um, but there are, there are many homes built in the twenties. That don't have on-street parking at all. So that's the, it's just kind of a, it's kind of a, uh, it's kind of a reality.
Yes. And before they go on, thank you for posing the wind forms.
Okay, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks. I think we're agreed on that. James, do we have anyone in the Zoom? Loaded that would like to speak, uh, anyone raise their hand would like to speak first. Do you give your name and address for the record, please?
Anybody on Zoom wish to speak, please make yourself known by raising your hand or in the chat future. No, I'm not seeing anyone.
Okay. Last chance. Um, we'll give the floor back to uh, the toll ones if you'd like to say something else.
It's, it's different topic.
Okay.
We got a notice in the mail about lead in our pipes for drinking water.
So I'll kick that to Commissioner.
Nothing's going to be done for four years.
Say it again.
Nothing's going to be done about it for four years.
So the lead levels that are in our water, there's lead in all water are two parts per billion. The threshold for the, from the state, the state D E P are drinking water rules are fifteen parts per billion. So they're extremely low. That's, that's the high we've ever had is two parts per billion. We're actually, I think the last reading was one and a half, maybe even less than that. So what the state has done, we test our water every year, I believe. And Bernie um, Gladz has to provide that up to the state. Our water is fine. We have no issues with the water. What the state has done on top of that. Is two years ago, they required every municipality in the state to remove any lines that have lead in them. Um, with old pipes in our, in our community, none of our mains are lead. But what happens is there's, it's called, we call it a gooseneck. It's the interconnection between your house and the city water lines. That may have some lead in that, that joint. So we have to go in and remove all of that. What also has to be removed is galvanized pipe, which isn't lead, but under the state's definition, they're considering it lead. So over the next ten to fifteen years, the city will be coming in and removing all of those service lines to everyone's home. It's about a sixty-five million dollar project that the cit, that the state is mandating on us as a municipality. Uh, we are first in line because we saw this coming two years ago.
Yeah.
Um, to get money from both the environment, the uh, state EPA and the federal EPA. As well as, there's a second group, uh, the I-bank. So to get loans and grants to help pay for this. The first phase of this will start in the Heights, Edgewater Avenue, Soory, South Fork in that area in the Heights, right by the, if you get off the bridge and go hard right. That's the area. We're going to start there. Um, but it has to go back to each person's home and we're responsible to do that. That's why it's a very expensive proposition. But your water is, is clean. We send that letter out every year. Every time every year we test the water, we have to show those results. Um, the lead in the water is, is extremely low. Um, as I said.
The letter kind of said, don't drink your water.
That didn't come from us.
You know.
The letter did not say, don't drink the water. No, your water is safe.
Okay.
That, that did, that letter, I read the letter. I think I, you signed it or I signed it.
I got a letter.
It did not say, don't drink the water. No, no.
But don't, did you use the hot water?
Oh, that was when.
Only if we're flushing fire hydrants in your neighborhood.
Yeah.
Didn't say that part though.
So I'd like to see that letter because that's not from us.
Yeah.
Yeah, you gave it to me somewhere.
So sometimes when they flush fire hydrants, you get a color in the water and you're supposed to let it run until it runs clear. It's not, still not a danger.
Yeah. If, if it's the letter that we sent out, it did not say anything about not drinking the water. And that's not from the city.
Show that with us, we'd love to see it.
Drop it off to the city clerk's office who have to say, we'll give you a copy back and make a copy and give it back to you, but.
Yeah, but that'd be great. Thank you. But the direct answer, the real simple hit thing is that your water's safe. It's some of the safest water in the county. You can ask the water department to come test it for you as well. You can add, I can call them and they will come out and test it for you at no charge. Um, and the city is in a, is in a, is in a particularly good position financially that we've gotten ahead of this huge. Um, expense to be in, in those things that Commissioner Landgraf mentioned. Um, to be prepared for this and it's already started. So we're actually ahead of this in some cases and the, and, and what the rest of New Jersey and the country. Has to do because of what happened in Flint, Michigan.
And Newark.
And where?
Newark.
And Newark.
Newark was handing out bottled water to everybody.
They had, they had, they had water issues with lead. So the, the, that's what kind of started this whole process.
Thanks for bringing it up though. I, I want to see the letter because it concerns me that that's something that's going out because that's not the letter that went. So Ernie is normally here. He said, I was nothing about water tonight. I'm not going to come. Sorry. So you, you get my explanation instead of his.
Yes. They're using the wrong service for you.
Yeah.
American Water sends those.
That's right.
Yeah. I would like to see.
There was one that came out from American Water.
American Water.
If you could drop a copy of that off, the, the city clerk's office, that would be great. I'd love to see it.
Quaranties on your plates. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, you do. And they look very official because they will go after them for putting that out for residents.
All right, I'll find them, bring it in. Um, next, since you're redoing the concert space at the library, is there a chance to move it so that. It comes off the library directly at the beach, the, the thing moving the wires so that it's not affecting the people who live on either side? And those on the beach can then hear better and stay on the, on the ocean side?
We can't move it to the beach.
Not, not move it to the beach, but move it from being on Newark out, New, Newport.
Newport.
To actually behind the fountain is at the library. The outstanding set of grass, but it's in the middle versus on the edge.
So this kind of falls under the, the, the federal department of uh, DEP, I believe, and the location of permit. That was given. So the permit in these types of cases are very difficult to get and we were actually very fortunate to be able to build a structure like this. It took us six to eight months to, to get the approval to replace, replace existing with new. So we, so that location was kind of fixed in our, in the, in the permitting of us. Otherwise, I don't know that we would be able, if we were to propose a new location in that area where the dunes, on this side of the dunes. I, I don't know that we would have.
Under the CAFRA rules, Coastal Air Facilities Review Act, that is the first structure from the ocean. Landward. So that's why we had to get a CAFRA permit and waterfront development permit. So where it was is where it has to stay. We can't move, we couldn't have moved it. We tried to look at options of moving it there. The issue was moving it where other issues were. Access from back of the stage to get equipment there. That was some other issues.
We would have had to remodel the park to allow access for the bands and for the, and for uh, and for mechanical issues. So we did, we did look at that. It kind of got shot down.
Yeah.
You know, it really affects the, the people who live in the houses along that.
I do it very well. And I know them very, they were very gracious in this last round. And uh, we're doing some things to try to create a buffer for them. And I think the new stage itself will have a, a, a buffer, not just visually. But acoustically to put the, 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 the direction of the sound.
With band shell where the back comes up and directs the sound.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. It'll be about three times the size of New Haven.
You eliminated the radio station, right? And that had.
We did.
Yeah, the radio station was, was putting a lot, putting loud uh, amplified music before and after. So that's kind of quieted down a little bit. Most people, I think when we have a new layout, we have the layout, the new, new layout this year. Is going to have the food trucks a little closer to the, oh, they're going to, actually, there was some pushback. So we're putting in a little closer in the parking lot. Yes. You saw that.
But they'll have more acts, people will have more access that live on that street, um, Newport Avenue to get down to their homes. It's not like it was last year. We shut the whole thing off. The first half of it or two thirds of it will be open for parking still.
Right. Right.
And then the whole lane coming down to their homes on the A C side will be accessible.
So I'm glad you take advantage of them. There's something that we taught, we settled the, the, the amount of hours that we go into, the planning and logistics of it is not small. So those are, and the, and the cost is is not insignificant either. So I appreciate that you're using it.
All right. Well, I love the concert. So um, last thing's kind of personal. If I was to get a petition together, how many submissions would I need to make if the dogs go on the beach in the morning?
Million.
So we, we tried to do that our first, it's like, yeah, so we tried to do that one of our first or second years in office. The pushback was horrendous. Um, you had a lot of people come out. They were concerned about dogs using the beach as restrooms like they do. They don't, you know, seen some dogs learn how to use the bathroom, but so we have the most, some of the most lenient rules on the beach than any other city. We have deemed, we are the most.
City, New York, everywhere else. We're the only ones that allow dogs to be at seventy-nine, yeah.
Right. So we have to have some balance here. And there are other people that use the beach. I mean, you'll see this Fourth of July weekend. And that, and we, we restrict it in a way that supposedly allows, um, you know, those evening hours. Um, and then, and then um, there's always people that um, that that bend those rules too. You see a lot of people that aren't using their dogs on leashes. That sort of thing. So then we would have to then enforce it. So we have, we aren't, we don't really have the manpower right now. Where it's not easy to find um special officers for the summertime. If you're interested in that, you might.
Second job.
We take the applications.
One, one issue we have is when people don't clean up after their dogs. So at, at, at night.
As a dog owner, I had a issue with that.
Yeah, so me too. I, I'm a.
Yeah.
Boomer wants to come in here and sit with me at night. So, wish for these meetings. But the issue is that if you allow them on at night, in the morning, one, you get the tide that cleans up to the waterline. And then our guys rake in the morning. That cleans up a lot of the issues that you have. If you allow them on in the morning.
There's no one to rake.
There's no one, we're raking then.
Yeah.
So it's, it's hard to get the beach clean for the daily use of the beachgoers. So, look, I would love it. I'd take my, in the winter time, Boomer and I are down there all the time.
You might consider, we might consider like morning hours for dogs at Ski Beach.
We're allowed there now.
They're allowed there now. So, but that's, uh, it may not be as convenient, but there's a bit of a beach there. It's kind of a bay beach.
It's a boat ramp.
Yeah.
Little bow tie, there's a.
Tie.
Tide was a beach. But I would love it. And we did, we tried and we had, we had quite a few people here. It was. They were concerned about, you know, kids coming down the beach and digging through the sand and then finding something that's not supposed to be there and. Yeah, so that was our, our problem. We were, did try that.
Letters in the mail almost weekly about.
Yeah.
About not doing it. So we try to create a balance. There's, there's, but there's a lot. There's a lot of dog owners and I think we, like, like you said, we're one of the most pervasive, permissive cities. Uh, Longport, Margate don't allow whatsoever practically, you know, and only in the off season if they do. I think Longport doesn't at all. So.
And they actually tried it.
Yeah.
But and there's a beach, the dog beach there, but I told no one things out there because no one oversees it and that's not.
Right. All right. Thank you. Thanks for coming out. Yeah, I appreciate you coming.
Sorry, one of the neighbors asked if I would ask you to enlarge the bike lane. Because that would slow down the traffic. He said the traffic is speeding up the street. At this, and it slows down when it gets to Margate.
Right.
And it slows down when it gets to Longport.
We're not going to be promoting the road dive here. It's not something that our police or fire chief support um for emergency access through our community. Um, the bike lane here cannot be widened without reducing the lane width and the lane width is what they're required to be.
He just asked me if I would.
No, and we, we get the question all the time. Are we going to do the same road diet that that Margate did and, and. You know, I've been an opponent of it. I don't support it. Uh, we have too much traffic here. We have more traffic signals for people to cross the streets. Um, that whole process was done for pedestrian and pedestrian safety. We're all for pedestrian safety, but to reduce traffic from four lanes to two. Would severely restrict traffic flow. I, I get the bike lanes.
Know what it would do. I see it all over Philadelphia.
Yeah.
Where you cannot move, the congestion is so bad.
Exactly. One thing to keep in mind is that there is a project in the works to, to synchronize the lights like they were back in the. Seventies and eighties where you could, and so that will, I think, will moderate the flow a little bit.
And if you synchronize it and you synchronize it at twenty-five miles per hour. That slows it down soon.
And that's what it would be done for. So it's less frustrating, right? So you know, you're not, you know, you're gonna get where you're gonna go and you don't have to try to beat a light or beat a person that's. Hope you from a light.
Absolutely.
There's, there's pluses and minuses. I think that's going to be our first step.
I know.
But it takes time and money.
Everything takes time.
We did set aside the funding for it, so we're.
Yeah.
Good for that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks for coming out. All right, uh, seeing um no more public comment.
Had a woman back there, but she left. She left, yeah.
Any more? Last call for uh public comment? Any on Zoom? I think we're good. Motion to close public comment, please.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Lisa roll call, please.
Commissioner Lang Graff?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes. Uh, we have no executive session tonight. That leads, brings us to the end of our meeting. Uh, motion to adjourn. So moved. Second. Lisa roll call, please.
Commissioner Lang Graff?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes. All right. Thank you.